Are fatalities caused by drowning. And whereas the majority of these incidents are not caused by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors, but by human error and poor judgment. And whereas we recognize the goals of the National Safe Voting Campaign are proactively supported by the USCG Station Pascagoula Floretella 38 of the USCG Auxiliary Recreational Safety Voting Program. And in the interest of promoting Recreational Voting Safety Week throughout the city of Goche and its invigils. And now therefore, we mayor and council of the city of Goche, Mississippi, do hereby support the goals of the North American Safe Voting Campaign and proclaim May 18th through May 24th, 2024 as National Safe Voting Week. To reinforce awareness and attention to the important lifesaving skills that can provide recreational voters with the knowledge to safely enjoy their voting experience throughout our inland and coastal waters. And witness whereof, we here to set our hands and cause the sale of the city of Goche to be affixed on the 21st day of May 2024. Mayor Casey Vaughn, City of Goche.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Would you like to say something, Mr.?
Yes, sir. With this proclamation, it raises awareness of the need for voting safety. Thousands of people will be on the waters, as you know. Not only the Gulf waters, but our bayous, our lakes, our rivers. And by having this proclamation and the support of the city of Goche, we believe it will help folks have a pleasant, pleasurable, and safer voting summer. So mayor, thank you, and thank you council for this proclamation.
Well, we thank you. All right.
Works on camera, man.
Camera one.
Thank you.
You have a good one. Appreciate it.
Next, Chief Fevers.
For what?
And the police department. A proclamation designating the week of May 10th through May 16th as National Police Week. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the city of Goche's police department. Whereas the city of Goche's police department plays an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the city of Goche. And whereas officers in our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by protecting them against violence and disorder and by protecting the innocent against deception. And whereas the officers of the Goche Police Department ceaseingly provide the vital public service. And now therefore, we mayor and council of the city in Goche, Mississippi, do hereby designate May 10th through May 16th as National Police Week. And witness whereof, we have here to set our hands and cause the sale of the city of Goche to be affixed on this, the 21st day of May 2024. Mayor Casey Vaughn, Goche City Council. Thank you, Chief Fevers. We appreciate y'all. Thank you. We appreciate all y'all do, all your hard work. Last week, they had a lot of people recognize them. We thank everybody in the community who did recognize them and take them some things by there to show their appreciation. Chief Latch? Goche firefighters? A proclamation recognizing May 4th, 2024, as National Firefighters Day. Whereas the city of Goche is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all living in and visiting the city of Goche, Mississippi. And whereas the city of Goche's firefighters are vital to our public safety network and a tireless link to protect lives and property through fire response, medical emergencies, and fire prevention. And whereas to keep our communities safe, firefighters also offer safety education and prevention strategies to the general public. And whereas despite the risk associated with their job, firefighters work around the clock to ensure the safety and well-being of the Goche citizens. And now therefore, we mayor and council of the city of Goche, Mississippi, do hereby recognize and proclaim May 4th, 2024, as National Firefighters Day. And witness whereof, we have here to set our hands and cause the sale of the city of Goche, Mississippi, to be affixed on this, the 21st day of May 2024. Mayor Casey Vaughn, Goche City Council. Thank you, chief. Thank you. Thank y'all. We appreciate all y'all do for us, and I know this week's been hard. Ms. Morgan? Michael? A proclamation designated in the week of May 19th through May 25th as National Public Works Week. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and service that are vital importance to sustainability and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Goche. And whereas public works professionals are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and structure, other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. And whereas it is in the public's interest for the citizens and civic leaders in Goche, Mississippi, to gain knowledge and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And now therefore, we mayor and council of the city of Goche, Mississippi, do hereby designate May 19th through May 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week. And witness whereof, we have here to set our hands and cause the sale of the city of Goche, Mississippi, to be affixed on this, the 21st day of May 2024. Mayor Casey Vaughn, Goche, Mississippi. Once again, we appreciate all you do and all y'all staff. And we're blessed to have H2O as our service provider.
No.
Ms. McDonald. You can do it. Teresa is our city clerk. And also, we have our deputy clerks Emily and Sherry, and they do a fabulous job. They thought they would sneak something through Mayor Vaughn and the Goche City Council, and we were out of town. And they're normally responsible for all this hard work and all these proclamations. But Mayor Vaughn had somebody else do the proclamation, and they thought they were going to skip through. So. Whereas the city of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. The Municipal Clerk's Week, May 5th through May the 11th, 2024, is celebrating its 55th anniversary. And whereas the Municipal Clerk's Week was initiated in 1969 by IMMC and endorsed by all of its members throughout the United States, Canada, and 15 other countries. May 5th through May the 11th is a time for celebration and reflection of the importance of the Clerk's Week. And whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agency of government at other levels. And municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas it is important to recognize the accomplishments of the Goche Municipal Clerk's Office, which serves as the council's foundation and the information system on functions of the local government and community. And whereas it is the most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Casey Vaughn, mayor of the city of Goche, Mississippi, and the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 5th, 2024, through May 11th, 2024, as Municipal Clerk's Week. And witness whereof, we have here to set our hands and cause the sale of the city of Goche, Mississippi, to be affixed on the 21st day of May 2024. Mayor Casey Vaughn, City of Goche. Speech, speech. And I will not ask Teresa to do anything because I'm already the most.
No, she's not gonna.
You mean afraid of her? I would not do that to Teresa. I know her.
She loves to talk.
Okay, that brings us to business item number one. Resolution Appointing Mississippi Municipal League 2024 Voting Delegates. Ms. Teresa Montgomery.
This is every year before the annual convention. Y'all need to select a voting delegate and a party officer.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Any public comments on business agenda item number one? Do we have a motion by council to appoint a delegate and an alternate delegate?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Mayor Casey Vaughn as voting delegates, and myself, Adam College, as first alternate.
We have a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No.
Councilman Gilat?
Congratulations.
Councilman Jackson?
Look at him.
And Councilman?
No discussion.
We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Gilat. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two. Resolution approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a development and reimbursement agreement between the city of Goche and ATM TIF LLC in connection with the redevelopment project and for related purposes by our city manager, Ms. Shantsey.
Yes, mayor. This is the agreement with the developer that contains the terms by which the city council may grant a grant. Just to be clear, this does not mean that a TIF will be taken out tomorrow. What it means is if the developer goes in and builds infrastructure, which is roads, water, sewer, sidewalks, lights, and also the retention pond, if he goes in and he builds that, and if he builds and increases the property taxes, and if he brings in retail and has sales sufficient enough to support a TIF, then at that time, once that is proven, you will or you are agreeing to issue a TIF bond based on for the first seven years, 50% of the sales tax and 100% of the adhorum for years eight and nine. It would be 40% as we go from 10 through 12, 30% of the sales tax. But none of that occurs until he brings in the development and the retail sales are actually established.
Thank you, Ms. Shantsey. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number two? If we did, come to the front, state your first and last name, and you have three minutes.
Marcus Garrett, 2102, Goche, Mississippi. I just heard this TIF. I had a question about the roads and all that. Is it standard of how they, is it certain qualifications to approve of the road construction?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Ms..
Yes, sir. That's handled through the permitting department, the planning department. So basically, what that means is he will submit his plans for the infrastructure. And once they're approved, and they have to be built to city standards, he will go in and build the water, the sewer, the streets, all the city standards, the lighting, the sidewalk. And once that is done, then it will be turned over actually to the city. But the city has to formally accept it. So yes, they will be built to city standards.
That was my question only. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other public comments? Do we have a motion by council to approve the form and authorizing the execution, delivery of a development and reimbursement agreement between the city of Goche and ATM TIF LLC in connection with the redevelopment project and for related purposes?
So will.
Motion by Councilman Jackson?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
I expressed my concerns for this in our last meeting. And I'm all for the development of the project, but I'm not necessarily 100% for the very modest TIF that we're giving them on the project.
Councilman College?
All about economic development. Let's rock and roll. That's all we got.
Thank you. Councilman Gilat?
Fine. This becoming a new day in the city of Goche. Something else is going to happen that is good.
Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing this development to Goche. And we definitely not going to run you off. You don't have no problem with us. We're giving the citizens what they asked for. They asked for development, and these are things that you implemented in your, to bring to our city. So we appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. I just want to thank our city manager and all who have worked on the project, the city council. You know, Goche is growing. And as I stated before, our ship was sinking when we hired Ms. Shantsey. She took a sinking ship and brought it back. And now she is seeing the fruits of her labor and the staff. We are moving forward. I encourage people and remind people, it's about Goche, Mississippi. This is all about economic development in Goche. And this tax incentive, once again, is used nationwide and other cities that was, is voted on every month. And the IberVale used it, and look where they are today. So once again, I thank you. I thank the developers and everybody who's partnered with them and will continue to work with them. We have a motion by Councilman Jackson, a second by Councilman College. All in favor? All opposed? And one, Councilman George had to recuse himself. And our attorney had to recuse himself because he also represents the board of trustees. So we have a motion, I mean, all in favor, motions carry. That brings us to business agenda item number three. We thank our citizens for their support. Business agenda item number three, consideration of an abatement at 7745 Narcissus Drive, Goche, Mississippi, by our planning director, Mr. Scott Ankersen.
Thank you, mayor. This is regarding staff's recommendation to demolish and clear the property at 7745 Narcissus Drive. Property couldn't light since 2021. It's had no water accounts since July 2021. There's been many previous co-violations including overgrown vegetation on this property. Utilities cannot be turned on due to disrepair to another home. The front porch, the deck, if you will, is lighted, falling apart. It's unsafe. The structure itself is unsafe. Been local since the last couple of years, so have the property cleared out. So staff recommended to city council, prevent it, assess administrative fee, and have the primary structure demolished when the law clears after the staff's tour. 10-day appeal period from the date of council adjournment. I've included in your packet the digits of property, code case file. I'd like to ask you to review if you have any questions. Happy to answer all sorts of code enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Do we have any citizen comments on business agenda item number three? Do we have a motion by council to approve the abatement at 7745 Narcissus Drive, Goche, Mississippi? And if we do, please state how you want to assess the fees and/or anything else.
I make a motion, we approve the abatement of 7745 Narcissus Drive, and that a penalty shall be assessed to the property at about 1,500 or 50% of the actual cost of clearing the property, whichever is more, to be assessed as a lien on the property.
We have a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elvin? Any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
Thank you to our code enforcement department. I know this area has some issues, and I appreciate you making the sweeps and doing whatever they can do.
Councilman Gilat?
I hear you say you're demolishing the entire trailer and everything, you're cleaning the property. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Councilman Jackson?
Uh, no comment.
Councilman George? I just want to thank Mr. Ankersen, planning department, and Mr. Fagins here as our code enforcement officer and all his hard work. We thank him for cleaning neighborhoods up here in Goche. Goche clean neighborhoods, help attract economic development and people to want to come move here. So we're, I'm very appreciative of y'all's hard work. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Elvin. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number four. Consideration for an abatement at 7737 Narcissus Drive, Goche, Mississippi, by planning director, Mr. Scott Ankersen.
Thank you, mayor. This is regarding staff recommendation to demolish and clear the property at 7737 Narcissus Drive. This is actually contiguous to the last property you approved. In this case, the mobile home did burn substantially damaged. Burned on December 20th, 2023. The property actually at the time was already in tax default status. There also were tires and different debris being dumped on the property due to it being abandoned. It's condition of life, it's condemned. So the week, code enforcement staff and myself selected this to be removed, this unsafe condition. Staff recommended city council approve this abatement, assess administrative fee, and have property demolished and cleared after the staff's tour is in a 10-day period from the date of council adjournment. Again, I've included pictures of this property to review the code case file. If you have any questions, you may.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Any public comments on business agenda item number four? Do we have a motion by council to approve the abatement at 7737 Narcissus Drive, Goche, Mississippi? And don't forget if you want to collect, assess any fees and how you want them collected.
Make a motion, we approve the abatement of 7737 Narcissus Drive, and that a penalty shall be assessed to the property at about 1,500 or 50% of the actual cost of clearing the property, whichever is more, to be assessed via lien on the property.
Motion by Councilman College, we got a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elvin? Any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
I'd just like to say thank you to Mr. Fagan as well. I know there's a lot of work that goes into building a case, and I appreciate what you do.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
Ditto.
Councilman Elvin? Thank you. Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson? Councilman George?
No comment.
And I just echo what I said before on the other item, that they're the same. We appreciate you all and echo Councilman Elvin. We got a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Elvin. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number five. The docket of claims, the staff presentation is by our city clerk, which they are posted online, attached to the agenda. And that is the presentation on the docket of claims. Do we have any public comments on the approval of the docket of claims? Do we have a motion by council?
Make a motion, we approve the Dr. Kaden's bond that all entries there are on are true, correctly entered, and not fraudulent.
Got a motion by Councilman College? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat? Any discussion, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
Thank you, Ms. Teresa, for paying the bills.
Councilman Gilat?
I still think we should have got up and done the speech. No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Childers?
No comment.
Ms. Montgomery, we thank you and your department for all y'all's hard work, and we appreciate you accepting y'all's proclamation tonight. We have a motion by Councilman College, second by Councilman Gilat. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda. They'll all be approved in one motion unless somebody, council member, wants to approve one, I mean, remove one. Consent agenda item number one is approval of the minutes from the special call meeting held May 7th, 2024, and the regular meeting held May 7th, 2024. Two, authorization to advertise a request for qualifications for professional engineering service related to Hickory Hill sewer rehabilitation. Three was pull. Four, authorization to advertise for bids for the sanitary sewer main rehabilitation phase two, College Park, Gilottville Road, and Bollywood subdivision. Five, receive the 2024 finance report. Anybody want to pull one? If not, do we have a motion to approve one, two, four, and five? Motion by Councilman Gilat? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College? All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our study agenda. First up is discuss citizen comments. Is there a citizen here who did not sign in in the back that is going to want to speak on a, dear citizen comments?
Right here.
Did you sign in? You didn't sign in?
No.
Okay, what's your name? And I'll write it.
Okay. Larry Childers, C-A-T-I-L-D-E-R.
Okay, Mr. Childers. And we'll, so when you get up to speak, I'll let you fill the rest out. You have three minutes. You'll come to the podium, state your first, last name, your address. Councilman College is the timekeeper. He will hold up this nice number one when you get to one minute. After your minute is up after that, I'll say your time is up, and please have a seat. First up, Rodney Goday.
Dr. Stink, name and all that. My name is Rodney Goday, 1713, Allen Boulevard. And I'm here to discuss Lakewood Estates being silted in over the years by collapsing drainage. The issue we're having is we have eight major drains that drain into the lake. It's a retention pond. It says on the official city platemail that the lake is to be shared by the homeowners that's property above the lake. It doesn't say anything about that we are to maintain the lake or the dam. My deed does. My deed does not reflect that. But 2,500 to 3,000 per cubic yards. It took 10 to 25 tons of material, 10 to 16 cubic yards times 3,000 pounds equals 48,000 pounds of silt that washed in from just one street collapse where the garbage truck, the rear wheels come up off the ground. It took days for them to repair that. That was 192,000 pounds of wastewater field that run off from the city through the culprits under our property and dumped into the lake. The new neighborhood behind us also dunks into the lake. That would be Lakewood West. Their representatives may or not be here, I don't know. But I sent y'all all a copy of the silt pictures that I had. Casey Ziers came back, Mr. Danos Ziers came back. Might have been after the meeting started, it said blocked, so might want to check that. But I had started cleaning after Katrina. Mr. Jones, the former councilman, he had promised to seek county funds to help clean and repair our lake from the Katrina damage, and it did not materialize. Along comes the Exxon spill, and then Zeta, which put more debris in our lake. The lake is silted in, you can't even see the water now, can't get the alligators out because it's so thick. But I started cleaning the lake. The apartment of environmental quality shut my process down. And then more silt when the other collapse in the street at 1709 Alvin Boulevard happened. But we have been dealing with this for years. The drainage is old, it silts our lake in. Why should we be responsible for cleaning the lake when the city just pollutes it again? And that's all I have to say to this, but I'm going to meet with Paulie Nancy on a later date, and the rest of the citizens will have their input on that too, the homeowners. But something's got to be done about the lake through county funds or parakeet repair funds or wherever they come from. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Goday. If you stay after the meeting, I'll verify you got the correct email address because I've not received nothing. Maybe you left that A out of the last name. That's what commonly happens. Okay, number two, and Mr. Goday, you will get with, the city staff had spoken to you earlier today, and they will call you back to schedule a meeting with Ms. Nancy and Mr. Danos. Two, Richard L. Jackson.
It was you one time, somebody else could give a chance.
You're gonna, okay. Three, Gino Bass.
I have several things. One-
State your first and last name and your add-
Gino Bass, 4821 Covin Tree Drive. Which we still don't have a street sign after four years. They're trying to get the speeders stopped inside of Westgate. It's really, really bad. I've talked to the police several times. They're going so fast, they're actually coming off the ground at times. They gotta be going extremely fast. Secondly, street lights. You definitely need street lights here, it's really dark in here. Third, the traffic light coming out of Westgate. It needs to stay green a little bit longer so more than two to three cars can get out. So we're gonna have to see the two or three times. I think that's all.
Okay, Mr. Bass. We'll see if we can get you some answers and help on that.
Well, deeply appreciate it.
And Ms. Morgan, Police Chief, Ms. Nancy just heard your comments, so she'll get with the city staff to try to address your-
Thank you.
-issues. Thank you. Four, Ms. Sheila Coleman.
Sheila Coleman, 2712 Chadana, Williston. I'm not here this evening to address the Anderson Facebook debacle. I have some questions I would like to, if afterwards you can answer for me. I would like to know about the overpass that was supposed to be built in the city for the South Side of Goche. And is that still being worked on? Is it still trying to be decided? And why, if not, Latnir is not the street they want to use since it's already four lanes? And I want to know why we don't have a sound system in here? Because I was out there at the last meeting, and nobody talks as loud as I do. They all mumble. You never hear anything anybody saying. So I would like to know if we could get a sound system in here so that everybody who comes to speak can be heard. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. And the overpass study was done. It was a feasibility study. The engineering firm, they had town hall meetings, and after the feasibility study, cost-wise, and the best, was recommended for golfing. The funds, we worked with our lobbyist and tried to secure funds to get it built. So we have been lobbying for funds, and that's where we currently sit. If Ms. Nancy wants to give a more current update on that, we will allow her to do that.
The cost projection about three years ago after the study was done was about 14.5 million, so I'm sure that's gone up by about 40% now. And so we have attempted to apply for grants. We did, or we did not receive the first one. We are fixing to apply again for a grant. And the way it works, you have to apply for engineering and design, then you apply for the next phase. So that's, it's a process. But we are exploring every avenue grant wise to try and attempt to get funding for it.
And then the sound system, Ms. Nancy, we do have that in like a plan to eventually, when funds are available, to address the sound system.
I have a sound system, no, we didn't.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, we just-
Are they not? Do we need to turn it up or something? Because they can't hear.
We just never really needed a mic at podium, but I was clear.
But I think she's talking about board members, aren't you, Ms. Coleman?
Members and podium.
Yeah. We'll check on and see why they're not, so you can't hear them. We'll check it. And the third one was-
Can you hear something up here?
And the, what was the third one, Ms. Coleman?
That was it.
That was it, okay. Okay, that answers that, so we'll be glad to look into that. You're welcome. Five, Billy Booth.
Good evening, Billy Booth, 1405 Hillcrest Street. Your legacy is the sum of the personal values and accomplishments and passions that resonates with others. And I stand again to plead with Councilman Anderson that he would adequately and truthfully address the Rachel Facebook post that was on his Facebook page. Teachers of Jesus teaches us that they should know that we are His disciples if we have love for one another. And that Rachel Facebook post has been very hateful and hurtful to many and has been a black cloud over the city of Goche. This is your legacy, which is attached to you, your family, and it's also attached to this city. And so I just ask that you address that truthfully and adequately as soon as you can. It's been over here, and you have not done so. Also, I wanted, if you will, tell the contractors that we do appreciate the work that they're doing on Martin Love Road, that we do see progress, and grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. I know they'll be glad to hear that. Six, Charles Moore.
Uh, we're still discussing about-
They need to state your first and last name, Miss Coleman.
... and then he's going to Westgate Parkway, Goche. We're still on Anderson. Like Reverend Jackson is still waiting, NWPCP is still waiting on Anderson to prove his innocence. So if he can't prove his innocence, I think he needs to step down. Another thing, we had a problem, somebody ran over a tree and ran into a person house that was down on Westgate Parkway. We need to do something about that, curators, these people. It seemed like they were doing about 65 street lots.
Okay, Mr. Truitt, you're speaking out of line. Greg Canada.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here at first also-
State your first and last name.
Oh, Grace Canada, 1453 Rue de Gentilly. Just by saying that, after, is one of my complaints is that the street sign is no longer there. Rue de Gentilly. It used to be there, I don't know when it went away, but it's gone now. And I'd like to get it back. Another thing to, I'd like to add on to Martin Love, that project, man, it's a good site. It really is. Sometimes I see them guys, a couple guys out there on Sunday. We see, I'll see about seven to eight heavy equipment out there. The first one, we only seen like one with four workers. So there's a good project that's going well right now. I really appreciate it. On the corner of Homestead and Martin Love Road, H2O, they came out and they cut. Man, I did a good job. It's the first time I've ever seen it cut like that. And I was going to call it in, but I didn't have to. So I appreciate you guys handing something that I've seen and wanting to bring to the table. If we could, would like to have a sign like Westgate. I don't know, what's the name of that division?
I love it.
I think it's called-
Rue, something Cormier.
Rue de Gombe.
Rue de Gombe. Bill. Bill, okay. I'd like to get that written down and see. But it'd be nice to have a sign there for us. And also the Highway Board, nothing against them, they do good business, good people. But that sign, it's just rusty. I mean, we're coming up with this new road. I mean, there should be some improvement to make things look a little bit better on that corner. Let me see, other than that, that's about it. To Rusty Anderson, man, I don't see how you go along and see it in the face of TV. It's kind of embarrassing. I mean, are you tired of that? I mean, I would just, you know, spit it out and get it out of the way. Like I said, it's been a year and a half. I mean, clear yourself up, and it's okay. And I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canada. We'll be glad to contact you about your neighborhood sign and work with that business in there with Councilman Anderson, Councilman College, myself.
Man, and actually-
That sign is actually-
H2O is already written down the name of the street sign, so.
Yeah, that was being reported already. I was with Mr. Fuller, and when he announced, when he asked, told me about it, I gave it to him. Yes, sir.
Larry Childers.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman.
State your address.
2325 Westgate Parkway. Okay. In Goche. And I have one main concern, is when are people want to have good, safe drinking water that we're paying for every month? And I'm very upset about it. I brought this up before. The water in my house, 90% of the time, is so nasty that you don't even want to take a bath with. I got a sick wife who stayed for cancer that I'm taking care of there. And it's a shame that I can't have good bath water or batewater if I want to bathe my wife. It's sad, it's sad. And it is, and I've talked to you about it before. Nothing was done. There's no sense in people having to pay for the water bill. It is there for no reason. I spent personally over $130 to $40 a month on bottled water to be able to cook with, or to make my coffee, and whatever I needed for. And that's continuous, sir. And, you know, I'm just, I'm just so upset about this. I preached, I prayed, I've had them over. Yeah, they come over one day, they caught me, they caught up on a good day, so they take a water sample while I'm on speaker, that's fine. But they didn't go in the house and see how much was coming out anywhere else. You know, I would have brought you a sample in here tonight, but fortunately, this is a good day for y'all, the cost of water didn't look that bad. But 90% of the time, it even stinks, smells like rotten egg if you can stand the smell.
Okay.
And my second, I plead, I hope that somebody will get some action out there. Now, you were praising your people that does your waterworks now? I'm telling you, the people that was here before done a lot better job than you did. So how can you praise those people like, like, they're not doing anything? They might be out here playing around and stuff and fooling you, but they're not nearly the company that was here before. So, and the last thing I say, want to say, my neighbor was the one who got the car crashed into it. And I think it's a terrible thing, the way that happened. The officer come out of the car, yeah, he's got insurance, here it is. Yeah, 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 it's progressive and it's good insurance. Come to find out, the guy didn't have enough. And my neighbor, they're going to end up paying the cost. He's got a good insurance company, but they're going to beat him to death. You're going to end up having to get a lawyer, and to my knowledge-
Your time's up, Mr. Childers. Your time's up. I'll be glad to meet with you or the council meeting going on after the meeting. But your three minutes is up. And I'll be glad to, I scheduled with Ms. Nancy when Public Works can meet you out there to do a water bottle test. But as far as our Public Works, I'm still here to tell you, they're doing a fine job. They cleaned a lot of work orders that were behind, have repaired a lot of infrastructure that was failing due to lack of the old company. So yes, I'm here to still boast about how they're good they're doing. And every council meeting, we have people come boast about what they're doing. You're the first one who's came and said something bad about them.
My house dropped great water.
May I say something, Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Childers, we can't blame H2O for our water problems.
Well, I know, it's a long-
No, Mr. Childers, let, Mr. Anderson, because you already have your three minutes. It's ours now.
We can't blame them anymore than we can blame Clearwater Solutions for our water problem. I went to Washington DC seven years ago, being a city manager, the mayor, our attorney, and an engineer to try to get funds for a new water filtration system. And two years later, I believe it was, we did get funds?
2020.
2020, two years later, we got funds. 2020 is four years ago. In five years, it's four years ago. Okay. We've had those funds for, say, four years or plus. We have been waiting on the Corps of Engineers to build the building that our water filtration plant goes in, is that correct, Ms. Nancy?
We probably-
Just to build the building? Well, I was told months and months ago that the skids that this equipment goes on, that goes in that building, was under contract in California. But we just found out a month ago that they just, Corps of Engineers, we thought the Corps of Engineers had done bid it out, but they had just bid it out about a month ago. It wasn't months ago, one month ago, they just. So now, we thought we were fixing to get the skids, no, they just bid it out a month ago. Corps of Engineers has sit on this, and sit on this, and sit on this for four years, probably stacked up in paperwork this high in Washington DC. That's the reason we don't have our water filtration plant. And I have harped on it, and harped on it, had I missed Nancy, for years now, and we still don't have it built. So now we're waiting on skids. I believe the equipment is here, isn't it? The equipment to process the water and-
That's what's being built, and it's actually being stored because we don't have the building to put it in.
The equipment is stored.
Yes.
So it's ready.
Still in California. The problem is, what the Corps is building with the funds we got is the building that's prefab metal building, basically.
That's easy.
How's the skids? You wouldn't want with this.
That's easy.
But it has been, you know, I've been through three, almost four years now, of nothing but technical and agency reviews over and over and over again. We finally made it through that, and they, they must have bid it out, but we had questions from bidders, and they brought them on a tour or whatever. So I just sent an email two days ago asking, when will this be awarded?
Okay, so you agree with me on everything I just said, that we're waiting on the Corps of Engineers?
Yes.
And that's our problem.
We're not the only ones. They've had a big conversation in Washington over it, because we're all sitting there waiting.
That's all, that's all. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Councilman Anderson, and Ms. Nancy, and Mr. Childers. That is the update, and we have given them at meetings. I'm sorry if you weren't aware of our- I'm sorry if you weren't aware of our updates, but we are working to clear up the water clarification. Next is discuss council comments. It's the second meeting of the month, and it is Councilman Elvin up first.
Mr. Ramona, has anybody complained about the light on Ngoche Van Cleve turning onto Valleywood into that neighborhood? Because if you're facing south at Ngoche Van Cleve and Valleywood Drive, they have a turn arrow to turn into the neighborhood. That arrow has been out for a while. And so when you have the rush hour traffic in the afternoons and in the mornings, northbound traffic keeps coming north, and the people trying to turn in the neighborhood can't turn in because they don't have that arrow. So they'll sit there for, you know, several minutes and have to just go south and make U-turns to come back north. So basically, the light, the arrow at Valleywood and Ngoche Van Cleve to turn onto, into the neighborhood is out. Causing quite a congestion in the afternoon, and it's hard to get into that neighborhood.
I reported that a couple of months ago.
You did, and when I went out that afternoon, the arrow was working. So I don't know if it's problematic or it's sticking or was going out, but I will-
If you could, because I know as of tonight, when I was coming in, I stopped to check it, and it wasn't even turning on. So it's just the red lights and the green lights are cycling, the arrow is still out. Yes, ma'am.
And I made four trips through there, and all four times, I couldn't get it to turn on. And you did go down there behind me, and it worked for you.
Right.
It's off and on.
I think it's something with the light bulb, because sometimes it happens when it is off, but then sometimes you go back thirty minutes to an hour later and it lights up. It's just a fluke. I don't, it's electrical maybe, I don't know. But it is coming and going, like Councilman Elvin said. It's working at times and it's not working at times. So it's-
Might be the service.
Maybe it's just something fishy. I mean, it's just electrical, something-
So you're aware of it, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention. Other than that, I just want to thank all the employees of the city for what you do each and every day. The city staff, boots on the ground out in the field, everything you do, we thank you. You know, what makes this city run. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Elvin. Councilman Anderson?
Yes, the gentleman from Westgate brought up the lights on Westgate Parkway. I know we have gotten some lights in some other areas of the city. Some lights in areas on that parkway would be nice, especially at night. I mean, the curves, like where the car missed the curve the other day and just went straight into the bedroom of a home, a light there would be nice. They do have neighborhood lights that was put in by the developer that built it. Are any of those lights working? I'm sorry?
The ones that are working, the people that live in the house who are paying for that?
You mean, it's not like it used to be where they paid a dollar thirty-eight cents per household to keep the lights operating? It's not like that anymore?
Ten dollars now, I think.
Didn't it used to be like that? Where it was-
Ten dollars a month.
Can we check on that machine, see if Singan River Electric?
Singan River Electric?
To see if they're like Councilman Gillet's neighborhood where they automatically all have two or three dollars? It was-
Two fifty.
Onto their bill, and see if maybe Singan River Electric might have accidentally stopped doing it when they should be doing it?
If they have.
If they used to do it? Did y'all used to do that, Mr. Bass, Mr. Truitt?
I don't know, because I lived there. But there's no lights for Singan River to turn on, so we'll get some more put in.
Okay, hold on.
Other than individual homes that have them on there.
Okay, Mr. Truitt?
Yes, in nineteen seventy-nine, I moved into Westgate, we was paying roughly under nine dollars. After betrayal, we spent twelve. I would pay attention to the bill now, but, so we probably would have to pay it. So we probably had to pay it and cut it off.
Okay, so it was the individual, right?
Okay, I understand that, but that was on the individual bill. That's what per light cost for you as an individual. But the neighborhood lights that was placed about every three or four homes in there by the developer, originally, originally, I think they were paying, each homeowner pays so much a month for those lights to be maintained.
I think they gone now.
The light poles are gone?
Yeah.
Okay, then the underground, the underground infrastructure wiring is gone then too. It would be nice though if Westgate Parkway could be lit to a point that is not so dangerous. Something I think we should look into. That's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Councilman College?
We have our third concert at the Sound this Friday, Justin Moore's. If you haven't got your tickets, go ahead and get them, and I'll see y'all there. That's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Gillet?
Hello. I'll be there. I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Yes. I want to get an update on College Park and get a deal for you. Is there an update on that?
We were already talking about it. We've got a fourth to come about today, and that-
Yeah, I've got metal floors. They said the first floor is going to be, we're trying to get roots.
Okay, and as far as, you as far as I-
I wrote out there the sign, and I think for a lot to make, I know what I said. I think we should get another, was it a channel letter? Don't we said a channel letter?
There's a channel letter on one side, it talks about Captain Offler.
The sign is still in good shape. The only problem is the, it looks like the castle, but it's come, one side's over. But the channel, there's a channel letter missing. So we've got rid of the two men, the middle of it is still in good shape. So that's what we talked about, just replaced the letter.
Okay, what you gonna do about the crown?
I'm talking about, type of crown, I'll get rid of it, it's happening just for the wall.
Gotcha.
So they match with-
Right.
I was calling it castle, but it's a crown.
Isn't that crown?
It's already replaced with a crown.
And somebody gave us, it was only like a hundred and twenty-five dollars a brick mason gave us that worked on Lamont sign, I thought.
That's right.
That's our home sign, but nobody else can get a sign.
Okay. I thought there was a guy who met with one of our former employees in the planning department, but I'll look back and see what the guy told somebody. Okay. It wasn't that, I thought it was very cheap.
Can't fight a person nowadays.
What was the contractor that, remember I sent a contractors, because you said it wasn't on, that's five grand? Okay.
Can't fight a person nowadays.
I would let them finish, and I go to her, breeze through the rest of this real quick. Oh, y'all ready for me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Ms. Sheila, I appreciate you for bringing up the bridge. You know, that's, we need that. And again, it would be good if it was on Latner, but it's too many different businesses you gotta take over to, in order for that to happen. So it's, it would be better to be on Dolphin. What else I had? We apologize about the water. I have to live through it just like you do, and it does have, sometimes have a smell to it, you know, especially if it's not being flushed out, you know? And, but we do apologize, and we working hard to improve it to see that the future of the water would be improved. And as we speak about Mr. Anderson stepping down, and you know, I look forward to that happening, because I understand that this is a, if you see now today, the city is growing. You see people want to invest into our city. And we need to have that image that, that all people appreciate. So that step down would be a step down that would bring more people to saying, hey, look, this is a place that we're accepted in. Because sometimes when the people come to other cities, you look around the city and you see, look at yourself, you don't feel like you're accepted in certain cities. Especially if this kind of image is put on our city, that's what people think. They're like, no, I don't want to go there because this is the mentality that they have. We don't have that mentality here in Ngoche. We have a mentality, you see, the people, as we voting right now, we're voting to move this city forward, and in investment into our city, you see us moving the city forward when it comes to people who want to build business. We're giving the things that, we're voting for the things that the people are asking for, because we want to see that this city grow. So I don't want to dwell too long on it, but I just want you to honestly, just really know that we would like to see the image of this city change, and that step down would be greatly appreciated. I can't force them to do it, but at the same time, I can advise, in my opinion, of what should be done. And it's up to that person to make that decision. I know we've been here repeatedly, over and over and over, and it's time for a change, it's time for a moving forward. And, because we've been here fighting to see change for this city, and you see the improvement of it, you see the city looking better, you see changes taking place, you see people saying Ngoche is back, you know? And that's what time it is right now, the growth of our city. And I thank Councilman College for bringing up the concerts, because these things are bringing people back to our city now, as you see. And you look on Facebook, you look all on social media, everybody's saying Ngoche is back. When we were the city that was once attracting, wasn't attracting people, and we lost our traction, now we regained it. So this council board is trying to give you exactly what the public was asking for, to rebuild Ngoche and bring the city back. And that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman George?
I think they pretty much covered it all. Concert coming up is really exciting. I always look forward to these, breath of fresh air every time we have one scheduled, and I look forward to see how it all carries out. There's a lot that goes into it, and I appreciate everybody that partakes in that. That's all I have. Thank you, Councilman George.
I have one more thing.
Yeah?
Concerning Mr. Canada's talking about the sign at the corner of Homestead and Martin Bluff Road, and he asked for a sign similar to what we put up for Westgate, which wasn't too expensive. Could we consider getting a sign put at that intersection once the, let's say the road is complete, not now, because it'll just get torn down, Mr. Canada? Could we look at putting a sign similar to the one that we put at Westgate on that corner there? But we need to come up with a-
Sort of got it written down.
Okay.
Ville de Coromont.
What's the name?
Ville, V-I-L-L-E de Coromont.
I thought it was Rue, but it's, okay, let's get the proper name down before we do it.
Yeah, I was trying to find it.
I thought it was Rue de Coromont, but it may-
That's the street, all the streets are Rue, the whatever.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, whatever, but it's subdivision, it's V-I-L-L-E de Coromont.
Okay, thank you.
Teresa, before we order, let's get with the business and see if maybe we can, and the residents, and do something nice with, maybe they would be a partner.
Try to standardize our sign.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, where there's not two different signs there, and we just get one.
Yeah.
Like, so it don't look like sign cluttered, let's-
Another thing is, Homestead Boulevard, part of that subdivision, like the estate park, going further down towards the river?
Where would you put the sign?
Have to look, have to plot.
It's not happening today, so we'll get discussed, and we'll let people know.
Martin Bluff and Homestead, but the subdivision is home, uh-
Louis Alexis.
Right. So that's why I'm saying it's multiple subdivisions, so let's get together.
The thing is, we don't have any signage in our driveway.
Right. Let's just, yeah, let's get together. There's multiple subdivisions at where the sign, where they're wanting the sign. There's multiple subdivisions where that sign would be located, so that's what we're talking about. Let's just all get together before we order signs.
It'll be this year.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. That's what you wanted to say?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Anybody else before I comment? First, I want to thank, as you heard earlier, we had a lot of proclamations, and we're sorry some of them were delayed. I apologize to the city staff, the departments that they were delayed. At our last meeting, as you know, was a long meeting, and we just had to put some of the agenda stuff onto this meeting due to that length of that meeting. So I hope you all understand, you were not forgotten, you were thought about, and we think about you all the time, and appreciate all your hard work. I can't echo enough about people praying for our community and others. I mean, to wake up to tragic news, or get ready to get tragic news as you're going to bed, and it's affecting our youth, it's very hard. And I can't imagine the parents coming and dealing with that tragedy. Myself, all of us up here have dealt with it, y'all have dealt with it. It's not easy, and it's hard for our youth already in today's times, dealing with peer pressure and hate, and for them to have to deal with tragedies on top of it, it's just really hard. So let's please remember our youth Friday night. As you heard, we do have a great concert at the Sound Amphitheater, but also our Ngoche Gators will be graduating. So, you know, they will have great times up in the swamp as we're at the Sound. But I want to say kudos to our city manager and Forty-Six Entertainment for working together, because all of our youth, and the faculty and administration up there at the high school that will be attending the graduation, was offered to come to celebrate their festivities afterwards at the Sound Amphitheater. So kudos to them, so it will be memorable, rememberable for them, their graduation, to have a national act performing in the city they graduated from, and they can also celebrate their graduation there. So kudos, Ms. Jancy, we thank you and Nathan Ball and all their staff for arranging that on behalf of the city and them. Also, I need to ask you all if we could approve, with that being said, as you know, the principal at Ngoche High School is retiring. Ms. Wrong, Ms. Walker, I'm sorry. Pam Walker has been promoted to the Ngoche High School principal from Singan River Academy. So we're blessed to have a Ngoche native there, and they're doing some transitioning right now. So some things got overlooked on their behalf again, and they need us to approve a little small firework display after their graduation. So if the council, if you do not mind making, they submitted their application for the special events this morning to the city, and the chief, everybody, the city manager, the chief has looked into it. So we just need approval for them, approve their special events permit with fireworks, if we could get a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the special events permit for Ngoche High School for their graduation event.
We got a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. I know they'll be thankful for you all approving that. That brings us to, and thank everybody for coming tonight. It's great to see new faces, it's great to see our regulars, and go out and share the good. Not everything's perfect in life, but we do have a lot of good things to offer here. Tasty Thirsty is coming up, we got beautiful parks, they're working on our inclusion playground, and we're going to continue to grow Ngoche. Myself, this past week, I was invited to judge an event in Harrison County, and Councilman College was attending the event. And just the positive atmosphere to be in another county, and them boasting about what we have going on here. For people from Stone County was, Jackson area was at that event. People we've never met, they're coming up to us and thanking us. That's something we all should be proud of. So our city manager and your staff, I want you all to hear that we do, people are recognizing the positive, and they are talking about it, so I thank all of you. That brings us to city manager comments. Ms. Jancy?
Yes, Mayor, as you called, we were given a grant for the construction of a sidewalk about almost half a mile in length from Valleywood to Highway Ninety. You authorized the project activation. This is actually the MOA.
You authorized the project activation, this is actually the MOA that sets forth the terms of the grant. So I wanted to present it to you and authorize me to sign it, but I also want to record it on the minutes, so if I could get a motion to approve that, please.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve? You all received, the council and myself received an email from the clerks department today. Do we have a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with Mississippi Department of Transportation for the Goche Van Cleve Road pedestrian improvement, Valleywood to US Ninety Project? Allow the city manager to sign and anything related to the project?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Anderson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat, any discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor?
Yes, I, I, yes, I'm so glad to see this come to life now. I originally asked for that years ago under previous city manager, and it kind of fell on deaf ears, and then we didn't talk about it much more after that, and then one night, Mr. Anthony Snow was in the audience, and he brought it up, and we got it back, talking about it, and got it going, and now we've got it approved, so now it's gonna come to pass. I would like to ask one question. How is it gonna cross the big ditch? Is it gonna be like a boardwalk across there, or do we know?
I don't know, Mark has been kind of working on the, just pulling there, are we coming up without track it there? I'm sure they'll do that in design.
Okay, it's, it's still in design then?
It has not been designed. So it's just, he just plotted it out for us to-
Okay, okay. I see, okay. Glad to see it come to pass, so it'd be nice.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Any other comments? We have a motion by Councilman Anderson, a second by Councilman Gilat, all in favor? Motion carries. Anything else, Ms. Jancy, you want to say? That brings us to our city clerk, Ms. Montgomery, you have any comments?
Yes, sir.
That brings us to Mr. Danos, you got any comments?
Thank you.
Also, we want to thank Brenda here this evening, our, for filling in for Sam, you're doing a great job, and we appreciate you filling in and coming tonight to help out. Do we have a motion to adjourn until June the fourth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty PM? Motion by Councilman Gilat, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, we're adjourned.